We got everyone here.
I'm, I've got five.
Okay, we're good? Call to order the regular city council meeting, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we begin with roll call?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Obrin.
Here.
Musman.
Kearns.
Here.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank your honor, I move to approve the minutes of the regular city council and committee of the whole meetings on February 8, 2022, and they be approved as published on February 19, 2022, and the special committee of the whole meeting, budget workshop number four of February 3, 2022, and they be approved as published on February 17, 2022, I move this be approved as adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Here.
Kearns.
Here.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank your honor, I move to approve the minutes of the regular city council and committee of the whole meetings on February 8, 2022, and they be approved as published on February 19, 2022, and the special committee of the whole meeting, budget workshop number four of February 3, 2022, and they be approved as published on February 17, 2022, I move this be approved as adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman. Kearns.
Yes.
We will convene a public hearing concerning accepting bid and awarding contract for asphalt street rehabilitation project G-2022, have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? If you're online, star six will unmute you if you'd like to address this public hearing or any others. Is there any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Alright, hearing none, we will close the public hearing, councilmember Davis.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for asphalt street rehabilitation, project G-2022, I move that it be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this?
There's lots of roads.
That is correct.
So it's, Jason has a, there we go. So, we're gonna have lots of street projects going on this year, I don't know if they're anything that'll touch on that.
Again.
Yeah, I just want to highlight those pieces and parts, I learned a new acronym, hot mix asphalt, HMA, in this process, so Beaver Channel Parkway, that'll be Mill Creek to the west of South 14th there, South 12th Street will be 15th Avenue out, Avenue South to 11th Avenue South overlay, South 32nd there as well, 2nd Avenue South to Mill Creek, and then following up on South 32nd Street, Mill Creek to Valley Oaks, River View Drive, which I know you guys love driving that and going, thunk, 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 that will be fixed, I think they're taking actually four inches out and putting two and a half inches layer back down, and then Rolling Metals will be from Tower Road, 33rd Avenue North and 34th Avenue North as well, so, some of those parts that are involved in that, one that we're just now, you guys are approving.
Alright. Is there any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
We will convene a public hearing concerning the proposed conveyance of previously vacated property located at 21st Avenue North and 22nd Avenue North, have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Is there any council members that would like to address this public hearing? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution authorizing acquisition of permanent easement of, from Michael Jurgerson, Jurgerson Hauling LLC, Dale Bot Trucking, Inc., and Dale E. Bot Revocable Trust, I move this be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this?
I, I, okay, so we have three, three items that all relate to each other, so just, so last two weeks ago, we vacated two sections, which has to do with the quiet zone projects, okay? And now that we've vacated them, we're actually selling those two pieces of land to the adjoining property owner, but then we have to acquire an easement, and actually, the cost to the citizens is nearly a wash, I think we come out a couple thousand dollars ahead.
Yeah, and there's one, after we talked, I looked this up, and so, it's $8,600 and $4,800 for the right aways, and then we're gonna maintain 50 foot up here by 66, and we'll maintain a little bit down here, and then we're paying $13,750 to basically a permanent easement, perpetual easement, to make sure it stays maintained, along with $11,900 as well to Jurgerson and Bot, to be able to use this through way, to be able to get to the pumping stations, etc.
Yeah, he's paying us for the land, we're paying for the easement, right?
Exactly, and then the future is, if say this ever became available, this would be a line, this, this is actually their dirt road, so to speak, through their property, but we'd align this to line up like McKinley does, as it heads up to the sawmill.
Yep, and this allows us to continue forward with the quiet zone projects, so the train horns, but also, we have a pumping station right down there that, that we need access to, so. Just in case, I'm sure everybody read it and was confused as I was.
It's only 43 pages.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion, or anybody else confused about this? Alright, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers. Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution authorizing conveyance of previously vacated property located at 21st Avenue North and 22nd Avenue North, I move that it be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
We will convene a public hearing concerning the proposed conveyance of previously vacated property located at 21st Avenue North and 22nd Avenue North, have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Is there any council members that would like to address this public hearing? Alright, hearing none, we will close the public hearing, councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution authorizing acquisition of permanent easement of, from Michael Jurgerson, Jurgerson Hauling LLC, Dale Bot Trucking, Inc., and Dale E. Bot Revocable Trust, I move this be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this?
I, I, okay, so we have three, three items that all relate to each other, so just, so last two weeks ago, we vacated two sections, which has to do with the quiet zone projects, okay? And now that we've vacated them, we're actually selling those two pieces of land to the adjoining property owner, but then we have to acquire an easement, and actually, the cost to the citizens is nearly a wash, I think we come out a couple thousand dollars ahead.
Yeah, and there's one, after we talked, I looked this up, and so, it's $8,600 and $4,800 for the right aways, and then we're gonna maintain 50 foot up here by 66, and we'll maintain a little bit down here, and then we're paying $13,750 to basically a permanent easement, perpetual easement, to make sure it stays maintained, along with $11,900 as well to Jurgerson and Bot, to be able to use this throughway, to be able to get to the pumping stations, etc.
Yeah, he's paying us for the land, we're paying for the easement, right?
Exactly, and then the future is, if say this ever became available, this would be a line, this, this is actually their dirt road, so to speak, through their property, but we'd align this to line up like McKinley does, as it heads up to the sawmill.
Yep, and this allows us to continue forward with the quiet zone projects, so the train horns, but also, we have a pumping station right down there that, that we need access to, so. Just in case, I'm sure everybody read it and was confused as I was.
It's only 43 pages.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion, or anybody else confused about this? Alright, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers. Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution authorizing conveyance of previously vacated property located at 21st Avenue North and 22nd Avenue North, I move that it be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
We will convene a public hearing concerning the proposed sale of vacated portions of 28th Avenue North and 29th Avenue North east of McKinley Street, have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing?
You've got the wrong one, this.
What's that?
Well, Matt's got the wrong one up.
Is. Yep, is there any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Yeah. Yep, alright, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution authorizing sale of vacated portions of 28th Avenue North and 29th Avenue North east of McKinley Street, I move it be adopted as presented.
Hey, hey, folks that are online, if you guys can mute your distant end real quick.
It's Ron.
It's Ron. There we go. Alright, do we have a motion there?
We did.
Okay, now we have a second, is there any discussion on this? Alright, can we, do you have something?
I was gonna say, this is a shout out to Herman, you know, he's worked for a long time to get this to where it is, appreciate the council's work to basically make this sale go through, and we're very hopeful that this could be a good development for that area, that area is by Rainbow Park, just north of Turtle Creek, by 28th and 29th Avenue North, up to 30th.
Yep, east of the railroad tracks.
Yep, check.
Alright, any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes. Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
We will convene a public hearing concerning the 2021 Community Development Block Grant, City of Clinton's Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment, have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, your honor, but I believe ECIA would like to speak.
Okay. We have a representative from ECIA?
We got Liz Kemp, your honor.
The floor is yours, ma'am.
Okay, hello, I'm Liz Kemp with ECIA, and the Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment that you see before you had been developed a couple of years ago, but the requirements of CBDG grants is that we have to have a current or within the last year assessment, and so, this has been compiled from your past approved Community Development and Housing Needs assessments, and what I have done is, to accommodate for the new CBDG coronavirus funding, added the projects that we have been talking about with the city, for the YWCA, and some of the micro enterprise projects that have been talked about, added those to the needs list, so that when we apply for these grants, they show up in, in your priority list of things to do in the community.
Alright, thank you. Is there any other comments for the public hearing, or questions for Liz?
No, but I think this is important, and I'm happy it's continuing.
Alright, hearing.
I can just, I can just add that if anybody sees something that's missing, then we can add it to the list, too.
Okay.
This is me. Hi, guys, Sierra Peterson, Chair of the Neighborhood Improvement Committee, I was reviewing a lot of this assessment myself, and although there are nits, like bits and pieces of grants that we've had before, there is a bulletin on there that says continue to promote home ownership, I know previously, we had looked at, and the NIC had approved applying for the first time home buyer loan, or grant, I'm not sure whatever happened with that, if we ever actually got that application in, I was informed through the grapevine that there was a lapse, and maybe it is this assessment that was needed before that.
That's a grant the city applies for?
Yes.
Okay.
Through, through ECIA, that's what we had gone for, and then, there was another one that we had looked at, was a exterior upgrade, which would be windows, roof, siding, there was energy efficiency was another option, we had, we were able to choose two, I never heard back on what came from those grants, if they were ever involved, and maybe the holdup was this assessment was needed, there's another bulletin on there that says work to maintain and improve the light areas of the city, I'm not sure what grants we're looking at that would go along with that, if we're looking like something that we did before with the CBDGs, are we thinking along those lines, is it gonna be different programs?
So the one right now we're doing, it's, it's gonna be on the cow tonight, is for the commercial buildings, both in the lions in the downtown blighted area for facade updates.
Okay, so that's the one that's going through, underneath of this assessment?
That's a COVID, that's a COVID one specific.
Right, right.
The other ones, I know, and I don't know if Liz can address this, but there was a, a timing sequence issue on one, one of them for the, I think exterior of the house for a certain age group, we didn't meet that cut up, yep, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, well, what happened is that Iowa Economic Development Authority changed how they accepted applications for some of the housing, CBDG housing programs, and they went from an annual application where they had a opening of the application period and a closing application period, then they reviewed all of the grants and ranked them on merit of application before, and then awarded, to a, the grant period is open, first come, first served, and there were so many applications that they closed down the application period within like two days after it was opened, and we just missed that window completely. The other reason that some of these, some of the grants that you might be accustomed to seeing on this list, IEDA has announced that in 2022, they are not doing any single family owner, or not funding any single family owner occupied type projects with CBDG funding, so.
That's very unfortunate.
It is, it's a longer story, that's why they're not doing it, that we probably have time to discuss in this public hearing, but it, that's why some of those things are not listed, because they're not fundable, but they still kind of, the general idea is they still, the needs still fall under improved housing, affordable housing type things.
Do we have a timeframe prior to the application due date, or the opening that we know in advance? So that we can be prepared?
In the past, we always had an opening date and a closing date, this last round of housing, they opened it up and they shut it down, like I said, within a matter of days, because they had so many applications that they couldn't fund even all the ones that were submitted.
But you're given a notice of when the opening date is, correct?
They announce it, they send out an announcement the day they open, I mean, it's not full warning, it's not like in two weeks, we're gonna open this.
Okay.
So they, yeah, they have changed some of the practices, we'll see how 2022 goes, on the other hand, they have not been given their 2022 allocation yet, so we don't, other than the COVID funds, we don't even know what type of funding's going to be available, because it has not been allocated from Congress yet.
Okay, can you put me into your contact list for that information, and some deeper information as to why we're no longer funding single family owner occupied?
Say that again?
No, I got you, Liz, I'll take care of it.
Okay, okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Sierra.
Thank you.
Alright, any other comments for the public hearing? Alright, hearing none, we will close the public hearing, we will convene a public hearing concerning the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus CBDG-CV Clinton YWCA Community Facilities Improvements Application for Funding for Facility Improvements at the Clinton YWCA. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, your honor, but Liz would like to talk to us again.
Liz, floor is yours, ma'am.
Okay, so, we had been asked to write, we as an ECIA, a grant application for the Y for facility improvements that will be major building improvements, and help extend their childcare space, increasing the efficiency of their spaces, and to reduce the amount of disease transmission and exposure in the childcare and public spaces of the Y. Some of these needs have been discussed by the Y in the past, some have been brought up because of the pandemic and recommendations that were made to the facility to help reduce transmission of disease, the proposed activities will be funded through the CBDG-CV and grant funding at $542,632, the Y has matching funds in the amount of $170,200, and their match comes from several sources, private contributions and communities, contributors and grants to make up that money. They also have a money market fund that they could use for additional work that they have proposed, their total project is an $881,043 project, the date application is whenever we can get this in, we'd like to have this in yet this week if possible, I need to get the printed or published minutes from this meeting, so as soon as I get those, I will be submitting the grant, as I said, we're gonna be requesting funds, CBDG funds in the amount of $542,632, $20,000 of that amount is for the grant administration, so there will be no, even though the city is technically the responsible entity for this grant, because that's how CBDG monies work, there will be no expense to the city, other than receiving the CBDG money and writing checks to where, where it needs to go to pay the bills, it is estimated that over 51% of the grant funding will benefit the low to moderate income families of Clinton, and this was computed through an income survey that was conducted, where we found actually of the 465, or 465 of the 500 surveys we collected were LMI, or 93%. Construction activities will take place at the Y building located at 317, 319 7th Avenue South in Clinton, and they will take, the facility improvements will take place throughout the entire building, there are no plans that this, to displace any persons who are working at the Y, or anybody living in that area with this project, if there would be any displacement for any reason, we would have to follow the rules and regulations of the Uniform Relocation Act, section 104D, and would have to comply with that ruling, the nature of the proposed activities is going to include upgrades and dehumidification in the locker rooms, to decrease mold and bacteria for infection prevention, new plastic lockers with drainage systems to improve mold and bacterial growth, and ease of cleaning and sanitizing, new flooring that will be easier to clean and sanitize, a kitchen remodel with touchless installation of faucets, remodel of social distancing entrances to prevent spread of the COVID and other transmittable disease, and installation of cubbies in the childcare area, which will help separate child, children's belongings, again, to help reduce transmission of disease, as I mentioned, the city is the grant T, and hundred first to them as a responsible entity, and this is required for CBDG, ECI has been working on this grant application, completing all of the environmental documentation and such that is required for the grant, and we will be paid then for administration of the grant, if awarded, through the CBDG funding that comes with the grant award, the match funding that is required is all going to be contributed by the Y, the city is not responsible for that local match.
Thank you.
Ms. Shannon, you're welcome to talk if you want.
I, I will just, I'm here if there's a question.
Gotcha.
Is, is there, we're in the public hearing, is there any other comments from council or citizens, or anyone? Nope, okay, hearing none, we will close the public hearing, councilmember Davis.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution approving Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus for the Clinton YWCA Facility Improvement Project, I move that it be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution approving the contract for 2022 CBDG-CV grant administration to East Central Intergovernmental Association, move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution approving the sub-recipient agreement for 2022 CBDG-CV grant with the Clinton YWCA Community Facilities Improvements, I move it be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
We will convene a public hearing concerning adopting a capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2023 through 2027, have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are online or in the room that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing?
Your honor, I'll just reinstate that I think we're borrowing just a tad bit too much, so I'll be voting no.
Any other comments for the public hearing? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, councilmember Shemmers.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution adopting capital improvement.
Thank you, Your Honor, I have a resolution adopting capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2023 through 2027, I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? Can we have roll call please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Sealy.
No.
Davis.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Alright, moving to the audience comments section, um, I have one yellow card filled out, Travis Winter.
It's a cow item.
It is a cow item, isn't it?
Yeah, so should I wait?
Do you wanna wait till the committee of the whole?
Yeah.
Okay, you can do that. Uh, I didn't have any other cards filled out, is there any other citizens that would like to address the council at this time, either in the room or online? Ron's getting loud again. Ron, can you mute yourself? We're getting a little feedback from you until you're ready to speak. Thank you sir. Alright, uh, moving on, uh, Councilmember Sealy.
Thank you, Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented on the attachment.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on consent agenda?
I'd like to poll six R. Robert and six T. Tom.
I had the exact same ones. Yeah, alright, six R., six T. Councilmember Musman, go ahead sir.
I would like oh, six zero, six P. and six Q.
Did you say six P., six Papa?
Oscar Papa.
That's right, I want Oscar Papa and the back.
Thank you sir, that's language I can understand. Councilmember Kearns, did you have, you're good?
Yeah.
Any other council members that would like to pull any things from the consent agenda? Alright, can we have a roll call vote on the balance of the consent agenda please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, Your Honor, I move the claims be received, approved and placed on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the claims listing? Alright, can we have roll call please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shummers.
Thank you, Your Honor, I have a resolution fixing date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed eight million, three hundred and thirty thousand general obligation capital loan notes of the City of Clinton, State of Iowa for the essential corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this?
Oh, for the folks at home, you're gonna get three no votes out of me, and it's not because I'm anti-borrowing or anti-progress, we're borrowing around nine million dollars. I'm concerned about our debt capacity in this situation we're potentially getting into, so that is why I don't support the next three resolutions.
And just for the same public at home, we had PFM, who's our financial advisors, take a look at this over the next ten years, and there's actually no issue to be able to borrow this amount this year, nor the seven point five million for the next ten years, each of those ten years, and that was from the professionals that do this for a living.
And we can agree to disagree because the charts show something different, but we're all here because we're all supposed to have our own opinions, aren't we?
Yes, and we're supposed to be speaking for the people.
And I'm speaking for my constituents.
Okay, any other comments on this? Can we have roll call please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Sealy.
No.
Davis.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, Your Honor, I have a resolution fixing date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed seven hundred thousand general obligation loan capital notes of the City of Clinton, State of Iowa, parentheses for general corporate purposes and parentheses, and providing for publication of notice thereof. I move it be adopted as read.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this? Can we have roll call please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Sealy.
No.
Davis.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Obern. Thank you, Your Honor, I have a resolution fixing date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars general obligation capital loan notes of the City of Clinton, State of Iowa for general corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof, move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? Can we have roll call please?
Councilmember Shummers. Sealy.
No.
Davis.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Your Honor, I have a resolution setting a public hearing on the FY 2022-2023 City of Clinton Operating Budget, I move that it be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this?
The levy is going down, I can go back to yes, I guess.
Alright, any other comments on this?
No, this is good news folks, so we were able to lower the levy, it's actually nearly as low as it's been in ten years.
Fifteen, fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen years, and, uh, basically the levy is what determines how much money you have to pay on your property taxes, so it's more money in the pockets of the citizens, more money you can spend at local retailers, stores, have for yourself, it's a good thing.
Any other discussion? Can we?
I was just gonna add on, and so, so now as the twentieth largest city, we're ranking in around two hundred, so we, people tell you the City of Clinton has got the highest taxes, when it pertains to the City of Clinton, they're about two hundred points off, so.
It's a good point. Yep.
We're very hopeful for the school in the county will follow suit, and then that affects everybody since the thirty-eight percent of your taxes only comes from the city levy.
Any other comments? Can we have roll call please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Sealy.
Thank you, Your Honor, I have a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a professional services agreement to provide consulting services with Retail Strategies LLC, I move this be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this?
Another good thing going on, Matt.
Yep, we're actually borrowing for this, um, item, but yes, this is definitely, this is Retail Strategies, we're taking a, a page out of the Dubuque book, uh, they actually got them in two thousand and fourteen, they brought fourteen new retailers, uh, in three and a half years, so we're very excited to, uh, do this, it's a three-year commitment, and we're also, uh, teaming up with CRDC, the Chamber, uh, I've been discussing this with Comanche as well as the region, uh, maybe even reach out further as far as the legs go, but basically what they'd look at is, what are we missing here, you know, they, they track, uh, all, believe it or not, there's tracking out there, it's not the government, but tracks everywhere, every time you go to the Quad Cities or Dubuque and you buy something, and so they're gonna show us what things could be here instead of somewhere else to then have you do your shopping right here, um, and, and it's gonna go from the whole gamut from, uh, places to eat to places to be able to go buy retail things, so I think it'll be a good thing.
Is that an essential corporate purpose or general corporate purpose, Bond?
I believe under the, when I highlighted those, that was under the general corporate.
Okay, okay.
Any other discussion on the Retail Strategies?
I would say this, anybody wanting something special in town, speak up.
So, so somebody said, said Chick-fil-A, and one of the things you gotta remember is, for all those high school folks that are here, is, it's one thing to show, which we can, that it could be here, but it's another thing to get a franchisee to then be in charge and then manage and run that, because that's the tough part, so. All those future franchise people that are coming out of Synergy.
There's a lot of good chicken in Clinton already, but, just saying.
There is good chicken, yeah.
Alright, any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shummers.
Thank you, Your Honor, I have a resolution supporting the completion of a four-lane US Highway 30 and supporting completion of US 30 corridor economic impact study by Snyder and Associates, I move this resolution be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second, we'll open for discussion, I know we have some special guests for this one, um, is, uh, Adam online?
Is this gonna be the Tom Determan corridor?
I thought he was gonna be online, maybe he's not, okay, Tom can come up.
Is Adam online?
Yeah, I was trying to go to the real knowledge on the subject, but I, I don't know if he's online.
He is, I heard him.
Yes, this is Adam Square.
Did you have any comments that you wanted to make?
Um, yeah, can you hear me okay?
We can sir, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much for your time tonight, and I'll be as quickly as I can, um, I, I know a lot of you folks are very familiar with the Highway 30 corridor and the four-lane development that Edith Pepper, uh, really led the charge for over twenty-five years. Um, I'm doing my role, um, having hazard passed, of course, to me about six to eight years ago, and, um, we have really worked hard to promote four-laning. The study for you with Snyder and Associates is kind of a culmination of a number of things. Um, we have put on public input presentations throughout the state for the last eight years, uh, we've developed a website, we host monthly conference calls, and we've really tried to take our coalition to another level. Uh, we did take a number of, um, pages from the playbook on Highway 20, and, um, have met with, uh, Shirley and the Highway 20 Coalition, and supported them in fact for many, many years. Uh, this study, we believe, is kind of that next step to take a number of our presentations, um, really take a hard look at the economics being created about Highway 30 across the entire state. Um, it will be focused on, um, businesses, population, travel, where people are traveling, why people are traveling, it will be comparisons of two-lane versus four-lane development, it will highlight the safety features of a four-lane versus a two-lane, uh, it will provide a number of other economic impact, um, ideas that will actually kind of go hand in hand for your economic development initiatives.
Always.
Really on any county or at a city level. Um, we believe this study will be important for us to be able to present to the DOC, to the Governor's Office and to IEDA, we think that it will tell a very good story for the counties, what counties the Highway 30 represents, and, um, while it's, um, certainly, um, being promoted right now to, uh, really work up on the four-lane development, we believe that you'll be able to use this as another tool in your toolbox for economic development long into the future, so, uh, with that, I'm open to answering any questions, and I know comments are to speak on our behalf as well.
Go ahead sir.
Um, yeah, I'm Tom Determan, I'm, uh, bike authority, 30 coalition, one of the founding members from a long, long time.
What's the date on the back of that button?
Yeah, we, we just think that, uh, you know, they, they did the study, uh, came back and recommended a super two, and, uh, right away we went to Debbie Durham with economic development and told her, you know, we didn't think that was right, she said she totally agreed with us, and does nothing for economic development, so that, uh, we took that to the commission too, you know, and the, it's kind of funny when you got state government, they don't talk to each other, but, uh, you know, we'll go on from there, but, uh, the, the economic development part of the four-lane, it's just so huge when, uh, have you been to the SMART Conference?
Yes.
You know, and, and when they had a site selector there, and it was, they had a whole, say ten items that they really wanted for this, uh, business, and we all, ninety-five of the hundred of us picked this one location, and we were all wrong, and it came down to transportation, they said they wanted to be within ten miles of a four-lane, they were fifteen, and we thought that was close, they kicked it out, so, it, it, it's just so huge, uh, four-lane development, I mean, that's just their criteria for, you know, site selectors, so, you know, we just have to do that, but we think for safety, there's a, you know, a million reasons why, you know, uh, my county engineer even asked me, Tom, what's the problem? You got four-lane, why would you have two lanes in the middle? It, it just doesn't seem to make any sense. I was out, um, a couple of weeks ago with Adam before the House Transportation Committee, a lot of new members, and we gave them an update, and same thing, we got done, they said, what's the problem? And we said, well, that's why we're here, so, uh, but I think this study, an economic development study, hopefully will give the commission a little fodder to, uh, you know, look at it again.
What are all the, are there other counties participating in this, or how, what's our, is it just Clinton County funding this, or?
Yeah, Adam, you wanna go ahead with that?
Yeah, you got, so, um, I have contacted and spoke to the Carroll County Board of Supervisors, the city, and the Economic Development Group, and all are funding it, Green County is doing it at all three levels, Proctor County is, uh, um, looking to also participate, even though they're not in our forty-mile priority zone at this time, they have been active with us, uh, throughout the years, and know that if we can get it built in our side of the state from Austin to Carroll, we can certainly start moving west towards Proctor County, and it is a priority for them, so they are planning to participate. I heard today from Cedar County that they are participating, and, um, they also provided me the resolutions of their county and their city sign, uh, stating that they do not want a super two developed through their county, and that is the first time, um, I believe anybody's ever heard of such a thing being done, um, you know, uh, local government stating that they don't want the DOC to do something in their, uh, on their corridor, and so we do have a lot of momentum right now, and we do have a lot of participation and partner. The total cost of the study is ninety-seven thousand, and we've been, um, meeting, you know, this will be my fourteenth meeting in the last six weeks, and, um, by design, we had to do this because we knew all of you were in your budget processes, and we wanted to be there to, to make, make sure that we were putting the fat in and a proper type of passion.
Do you know where we stand on funding of the project in its entirety?
Yeah, so, um, as of today, um, I believe we're at approximately, uh, seventy-five thousand out of the ninety-seven thousand has been, um, committed to us already, and so, uh, we're hoping that, um, through your guys' commitment, uh, then the Highway 30 Coalition is also putting a, a, a pretty big chunk of skin in the game between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars, and this is a total volunteer organization, so we have strength and saved for the last eight years, um, we currently have about twenty-three thousand dollars in our account, and we're willing to commit the lion's share of it if necessary and try to accomplish this, so we are getting very close, we're hoping that, um, we don't have to make too many more phone calls, um, but, uh, I'm gonna continue to meet with as many partners as possible until we can get to that fully funded, um, level.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, um, Clinton County, we, uh, approved ten thousand.
Ten.
Here last week, uh, I think Cedar County just approved fifteen.
Is that ten part of the seventy-five, your ten?
Yeah.
The county's ten?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we were just trying to raise half of it on the east and half of it on the west, and, uh, we, yeah, we were kind of hoping to get, uh, uh, ten from the city and ten maybe from the development company, uh, um, I still owe Chris Riley a call from ADM, he kind of wanted to know, you know, other players, so I, I'm gonna get back with him probably tomorrow over that, hopefully we can get ADM, maybe Lyndell.
Sure.
Somewhere, you know, uh, gotta get Clausen in there too, trucker, right?
Yeah, okay.
And I will be, and I will be speaking tomorrow to, I'll, I'll also be speaking to Randus, uh, tomorrow, so, uh, we are, we are continuing to reach out to some private sector businesses as well.
Okay.
Uh, last week, we had a statewide supervisor meeting out in Des Moines and met, uh, Governor Branstad, of course, he's seen my button too, and his encouragement, he says, Tom, don't give up, so, uh, you know, twenty didn't get billed overnight too, and, uh, it took a while, but, you know, I, I can't imagine anyone on twenty saying that wasn't a good thing.
Mm-hmm, right. Councilmember Shummers, you're on the coalition, do you have any? Yeah. Comments or no? I, just wanted to give you the opportunity since you're.
I'm, I'm a junior guy compared to Tom, so. You know, and all I, all I, since the Lisbon bypass, everyone says, oh, boy, that's, it's so nice that Lisbon bypass, when are we gonna get ours? Something with, uh, Tama Hills, I've got that done out of the Tama Hills, that other about twenty-mile section will be done either late this year or next year, so it'll be done all the way from Lisbon to, uh, it'll be done all the way from Lisbon to, uh, the other side of Ames.
Yep.
So it just, I don't know, it just doesn't seem to make sense.
All I can add is if you go to the western part of Iowa and you go on Highway 20, it's awesome, and then you drive back along Highway 30, besides taking longer and hitting all the bumps in the road, it definitely could use, uh, it could use the four-lane.
You know, and we, we're, we're paying for 20, I think they can help pay for 30. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Adam. We appreciate you being on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
As soon as, as soon as you guys, um, have information and you just want to let me know, um, I'm, I'm just trying to know where we're at as far as funding, so as soon as we know we have all of our funds in order, we'll pull the trigger on the study, and, and then I can start asking formally for the, the payments and what's been provided, or if there's any question for that.
Yeah, I'm wondering the same. Should we ask? Adam, what, can you give us an idea? Is there any cities that have contributed, or is it mostly counties?
Uh, the City of Carroll, the City of Jefferson, um, the, you see here, the City of Genesah.
Can you give us an idea of what kind of amounts?
Um, so far, those have been at about a $5,000 level.
Okay.
Probably the smaller cities before than, than Clinton, but, um, yeah, so that, those have all been at a $5,000 level.
Would, Bill, do you have any thoughts since you, for the contribution from the city?
Yeah, I think, I think we should do it. I mean, we've been working at this forever.
Right.
And this is how some of the other things got started, and when we're sitting waiting for the state to provide the funding, and they're obviously not going forward, the only way we're going to do is get through that cheese out there for them to bite on it.
What, what amount were you thinking? Do you know?
Oh, I would never tell you on the record what I was thinking, but it was a little more than this, quite frankly, so...
Well, and you have to figure, we're sitting in the middle of, of a two-lane desert. I mean, you got to drive to get to 80, or 88, or, um, 61, there's just, there's nothing here. We need this.
Yeah.
Yeah, and to be fair, I was thinking more than what we are putting in on this.
I'm surprised the county only put in 10.
I asked for 25.
Okay.
See, I was, I was saying we were going to match the county, so...
Because the, well, I, I'm, I'm a little shocked at the 10.
We'll come back, we'll match it.
Well, Cedar did.
Throw some fiber in there, Tom.
Cedar did 20?
15.
15?
Yeah.
Cedar County's a stellar county. Yeah, and we, we do have a meeting tomorrow. The CRDC and the Chamber have not finalized a number as well. Is this something we determine right now, or get together for the next, uh, business meeting? Yeah, you could, you could always commit to a level and change that. Um, I mean, I'm fine with, uh, the $10,000 level, um, to match the county.
I'm good with that.
I'll make the motion.
I'm good with that.
I need a second, though.
Second.
Okay. Okay, I think, so, we need to make, in a, we have a motion and a second on this, so the motion would have to be an amendment to add the funding piece on there? No? It just says right here that council may make a motion directing what amount to contribute. So we're good? Okay. All right. Um, all right, so do we need, you want roll call on both of those, or?
Please.
Okay, so, let's start with, uh, the roll call vote on the funding amount of 10,000 towards the study.
Councilmember Shimmers.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Okay, and then can we have a roll call vote on, uh, I guess be the supporting of the study that we had a motion and a second on?
Councilmember Shimmers.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, Adam, thank you for being online. We appreciate it.
Very, very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
You too. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Have a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an assignment of option to purchase real property from L's and Company, LLC to Cottage Bluff LLC. I move that it be approved, uh, I'm sorry, adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
We have a esteemed guest with us tonight, but I'll see if I can cover, so, um, Chris is actually here tonight with us. You know, as you know, he did a remarkable job on the Washington Middle School. This is Cottage Bluff, also AKA Mount Pleasant. And so, just a few things, uh, some, some small setbacks on timing with SHPO, which is the historical area for our state. So he's going through all those, and so we want to make sure, as, you know, Cody would like this, but I always like to say we have time and space, right? So this is going to keep everything on track, but he just needs a little more time and space to get those things knocked out prior to then, uh, you know, breaking ground, if you will, on the demos and then getting the building going. Is that, do okay, sir?
How much more time are we talking?
Uh, I think it's, what's, 30 days?
You're looking at an extra 30 days?
I had to get him up.
He wanted to come up.
Forty-seven days.
Uh, the, there's a 106 review process. Part of the project funding includes some home funds through HUD, and those require a 106 review, which takes, uh, SHPO 30 days. We thought we were there, they came back after their 30 days and said they would like us to do a Phase One archaeological study.
Oh.
So we're doing that.
All right.
Can't do that until the ground thaws.
Yep.
So I, I don't want to commit to a specific date yet. Uh, what I'd like to do is get the archaeological study done, get it submitted to SHPO, get their response to say, yes, that's fine, then they'll send it to HUD. They'll take another 30 days. We may need another extension. We'll deal with that when we know what the exact date is, if that's okay with you all.
Sounds good.
I just wanted you to be able to say "archaeological."
Yeah.
Slowly. Because I, I felt like it was a Parks and Rec episode, like, really, you know, we're so close to getting this going, and it's one more thing that we have to do, so that's all right.
Persistence sells.
All right. Any, uh, other discussion or questions for Chris? 30 days.
We'll work as quickly as we can.
I know you will. Can we, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shimmers.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns. Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Obrin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the lease agreement with the Clinton Baseball Club for January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2024. Move this resolution to be adopted as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Who wants to go first?
I'll go. I, I just want to say that we have been working through this diligently for a period of time that we are...
12 plus.
Yeah. We are finally there, and it's been great working with the team from the baseball club because they're, they're wanting to make sure that baseball stays in Clinton for the future, and so is the City of Clinton, and I think we're there now.
Councilmember Shimmers?
Yeah, thank you. This has been an interesting process. I just, as the team negotiator, like your thoughts on it?
Uh, I think we had some bumps in the road. Uh, obviously, we had some tough conversations along the way, but I think at the end of the day, uh, everybody's main focus was that we wanted to make sure we had baseball in Clinton, and we came together and we found a way to get this done. Um, there was concessions on both sides, uh, but I think this is a stronger agreement, and what it does, it's a little more specific than the other one, so it takes away some ambiguity, ambiguity on who's responsible for what, uh, and it also, uh, I think sets both, both groups up for success in the future. And I know it took a long time, but I'm, I'm slow, I guess, so, but I do appreciate the guys working with the team too, and I have the signed, the signed copy is here as well. I know it wasn't in the packet. Um, we had a little, little hiccup on that too, so, uh, but we're all right here, so... Yeah. All right, any other discussion on this? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shimmers.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Shimmers?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance for a first consideration.
Please read the title.
Ordinance amending Chapter 159 zoning regulation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Clinton, Iowa.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this, uh, ordinance? I worked on some modifications for it.
Did you?
Yeah. And, but, Bill brought up a thing, so I don't know how you think that addresses it.
Well, I had 10 seconds to review it before the meeting, so I, I can't, I can't honestly tell you. I mean, I guess I'm going to have to defer back. We had 21 people and three different committees review the prior one, and I'm not saying that's any better or any worse. I haven't had a chance to review it.
Yeah.
Um, I guess my frustrating part would be after 21 yes votes, three different committees, it gets frustrating, um, because when you take these ordinances on to update them and try to bring the city back into code after 10, 20, 30 years of being out of, um, when we get into the ballgame with a two-minute warning and we change it, it does get frustrating when you're the one working on it, so...
Yeah, I get it.
Um, I'll leave you, I'll leave you with that and however you want to proceed with your...
Well, I'll just, here, can I see that? I'll just tell the council generally what I did here, and you guys can make a decision. Um, the first section talks about temporary dwellings on city property, and then we go on to talk about how we allow it for a 10-day period, and to me, the only camping on city property should be in the designated location, which is Riverfront right now. So I don't even, I scratched the 10 days and basically changed this to say you can't put your camper, your shack, your mobile home on city property unless it's the campground. Made that, I thought that made sense. We did put in their special use permit as well, like RagRye, obviously, they were camping other places. And I saw, like, when we had RagRye, we approved by resolution, you know, so on and so forth. So then, um, I did a furthermore section, and I said you can't live on, in a temporary structure on private property, basically if it's determined to be unfit, um, or a nuisance of some sort, and then I actually pulled an entire section, um, that describes what an unfit dwelling unit can be and which it applies well to these situations, which in my thoughts were, this gives the city officials the ability to address the nuisance issues, the issues which are, um, you know, unsafe, unsanitary, decayed, dilapidated. Um, basically, it allows the city that enforcement mechanism they need to address the issues. It bans it on city property, but then it doesn't impact private property owners that are not causing any sort of issues. And that was my main point of contention when we talked last time, was I didn't want to negatively impact the good folks of Clinton that are using their camper and not causing, causing an issue. That was, so, and so here we are, you guys can't just say, oh, yeah, that sounds good, let's prove what you wrote, because you got to look at it, and it legally needs reviewed too, because I wasn't, but I don't know what the best solution here is. And there are a couple, a couple things, like Councilmember Shimmers said, that's, that's not detailed in that proposal as well. But this allows, like, you know, BNS, Tammy, or Lori, if they run a situation or the police department, they can provide an order to vacate because it doesn't meet said conditions, so on and so forth. What, and, and it's, it's the council's decision here. Um, I would like to look at this a little more and, and see if it fits well, but if you guys don't want to, that's fine.
Might you ask Pat if you can do first consideration and then bring the changes? So we can do second and third readings, you can have those updated.
Pat?
Pat, can, can the council approve the first consideration and then receive the draft from Councilmember Sealy and then add that, good, bad, and ugly, what they decide, and then bring that back for the second and third consideration?
Well, it can approve the, the consideration before it and direct that staff make whatever changes the council would like to see. That's perfectly acceptable.
What, at the moment, there's not any, at the moment, there's not any changes. I'd like to give an opportunity for council to review what Councilmember Sealy came up with.
What I would recommend then, if the council wants to do that, is Councilmember Sealy should make a motion to postpone until the next meeting, the consideration, first consideration of ordinance. And that way...
For one, okay. Postpone to a date certain?
Yeah. To see what his revision is going to be, we can, we can actually review the one that he presents, or we can have two versions side by side and determine which one to approve.
If, I, I would be willing to make that motion if they, and I would also like to take the opportunity, as Councilmember Shimmers referenced, to show this to the Neighborhood Improvement Committee. When's their meeting? Yeah, I don't know when their next meeting is.
It's the last week of the month, so it should be coming up next week.
Um, so if I postpone this reading one week, we can get started and see what happens. Yeah, send that as soon as you can. Yep.
Thursday, yeah.
I will get it to you tonight. In fact, Scott has any, I, I can email to you, yeah. But it's a very rough draft, but you can see, I did it with changes, so you can see my markups exactly.
Just, just one quick question on yours.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you allow them to temporarily dwell on someone's property indefinitely, then?
No, no, no. So, nobody can go dwell on your property or my property?
No, but I would, if I had someone coming into town, I can set them up in my backyard forever and ever, amen?
Well, and that's what we need to talk about, but, but no, I mean, there's, I, really, if you read this, there's parts of that that wouldn't allow that to happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, send that on.
It targets a lot about the nuisance, like, if it's a nuisance, then we take care of it. If it's not a nuisance, then we leave it alone. In, in the large section of it...
I'm not about leaving everything just alone, though.
That's okay. That's fine.
Yeah, let's see that.
One thing that Pat said in one of his comments was, we don't want to be in conflict with the existing, I'm sorry, I'm not all here, the, the existing nuisance, or, or something where we've already got things on the books.
Other ordinances, yeah.
Other ordinances, and we don't want to come in conflict with that.
This verbiage actually comes directly from our, our nuisance ordinance.
Okay, okay, so maybe that's, maybe that's what I remember.
And that's, I did that on purpose, so you could actually relate it to something we're already using as an enforcement. Actually, it came from Bill's ordinance that he brought forward, uh, what, about four meetings ago?
Okay, yeah, yeah, that makes sense now. That's what I remember.
That verbiage came directly from that.
Okay.
Oh. Me. Oh, me.
Oh, you're right, that, so.
So you're going to have to retain what you have. Some of that we have.
You, and that's, and that's, I mean, that's council's choice, yeah, absolutely.
I'll mo- make a motion to postpone this consideration until the next business meeting.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to postpone to the next business meeting. Uh, is there any discussion on that? All right, can, go ahead, sir.
We discussed the other day that we were going to talk about, um, kind of using, like, the camping rules where they were there for so long and then they had to vacate for a little bit. Do you remember that?
I do remember that, but I, honestly, I didn't, I didn't get the information, um, for that. I apologize, Ron.
I think that would take care of it.
Yeah, I think, I think this would take care of it as well. Um, but that's just something we can look at as well. Councilmember Musman, did you read that?
We won't be, we won't be able to get a quorum, obviously, even if it's passed around through email. I mean, Pat's going to have to do some, uh,
Bring it back to the next council.
Slick. Well, now you're delaying another month, and, I mean, that's.
Well, no, that way you guys can talk about it and you get the final version you want to have, and then it goes to the March twenty-second meeting.
Okay, I'm fine with whatever.
I just want to make sure you guys are comfortable with it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess that brings up another point. Do you, right, right now, we have a motion and a second to go to the next business meeting, which is March eighth. Do you, would you rather it go to the Cal? Or do you think council can, um, or you think there's time?
At this point, I would suggest we go back to the Cal, because I do believe the Planning Commission has a voice that we are ignoring. The Neighborhood Improvement Committee,
And that's the first one.
It has a voice that we've ignored.
Okay.
So why not let them have the voice?
I'm, I'm with you on that one.
Yep. I'll resend my, uh, motion.
All right.
Do you have a new one? I will make a motion to get this to our committees, well, to get it fixed up, get it to the committees and get it to the Cal ASAP.
Okay.
ASAP.
ASAP.
Second. All right, so we have a motion and a second to get this to the committees and the Cal ASAP.
ASAP.
Can we have roll call on that, please?
Councilmember Shimmers.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
All right, moving to unfinished business. Uh, Councilmember Shimmers, you're up first, six R.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, this, this one, I was just going to have either our esteemed, uh, city administrator or our fire chief kind of fill us in on this. I think it's a good deal, but it is also, uh, something that should be brought forward for information.
Mayor, Council, Fire Chief Joel Atkinson. This is just an agreement that we have with every neighboring community ambulances for providing tier service for them. Um, Savannah is kind of a new one that just came in that they've struggled with staffing, so we've been cheering with them the last couple, well, we had two cheers with them last month. And for our billing company to bill them, we need to have an agreement, so that's all this is.
So Savannah's actually, this is a, we're, this is a new agreement with them. It's not a renewal?
It's not a renewal with them, this is a new agreement.
But we're expanding, is what we're doing.
We are expanding, yes.
Well, and chief, also explain how it works with, when something happens in Savannah, how then we hand that off.
So, yeah, if they have a call in Savannah, they might have an EMTB level or EMT level, they'd start transporting towards Clinton and call us, and we'd meet them on Highway eighty-four and, and get in their ambulance.
Is there ambulance service, a private company, or is it the city?
It's a community, I believe it's a nonprofit.
It's a community thing? Cause it's that little building right on the?
On Chicago Avenue, actually, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joel.
I'd recommend this be passed, make a motion pass.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shimmers.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Six T.
Six T. This is the one we save the, or I'm saving the best for last. So, if, uh, future Eagle Scout, uh, Ethan Mittendorf could tell us what's going on here, because this is an, I will tell you, this guy is a hard-working guy. So, um, he's got a rolling project, he's going to propose, or not propose, but tell us about, Ethan, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, my name is Ethan Mittendorf. I'm part of Troop Six Forty-two here in Clinton, and I have been working to receive my Eagle Scout. So I, I had heard that the Erickson Center Pond will be, uh, has been drained and dredged, and I thought it was a good idea that to build a dock to allow canoe access, canoe and kayak access, easier access than trying to build it on the bank as a small dock. You can set in the water and you can walk your canoe and kayak out. So it's low to the water, so easy to get in and out.